Good evening. I'm here to call the meeting to order. It looks like 7:02. Everyone, please rise and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everyone. All right, we're going to start this night off fantastically with a showcase to recognize all of our 2025 retirees. Peter, would you like to take it away from here?
I sure would. Thank you. So it is with so many mixed emotions that we celebrate our retirees tonight. We're celebrating them in this wonderful stage and their journey, and we're going to miss them. You know, we have such a collective level of incredible expertise, care for students, care for one another, critical members of our community who are here tonight. And, you know, it really is our honor to celebrate them, to recognize their incredible contributions to the lives of so many children throughout their careers here and there against it. And each and every one of them had incredible influence on the lives of literally thousands of students. And so when we think about our life's journey, we think about people who matter, people who do things that matter, people who really make an impact in the world. The people we're celebrating tonight really have done so. And so what we're going to do tonight is have each one of our principals and directors who have someone who's here tonight who's retiring say a few words about them. And so we want to recognize each and every one of them and all they have brought to our community. So tonight, why don't we start with our elementary school? And we'll have Lisa come up and recognize our people who are retiring from our elementary school.
I'd like to start with Mary Ann Cook. Come join me, please. So we're here to, I don't want to cry because I always cry at these things. Wish Mary Ann very well in her retirement. I have a little synopsis of her career. She started after graduating at Rhode Island College in 1985 with a special ed degree. From the very beginning, her heart, it was clearly in the right place with children who needed someone to believe in them, support them, and help them shine. She began her career with deep education, working with early intervention and with Easter seals, supporting students with severe and profound disabilities. She also worked with Special Education's preschool program. Along the way, she brought her skills and other roles. Apparently, she was a secretary and a data entry person at one point. That was news to me when I looked at her file. She joined now against Elementary School in 1998. And for over two decades, she's worn many, many hats from special educator to classroom teacher, most notably in grade three, where she spent the majority of her teaching years. If you've ever walked into her classroom, she's always emphasized the importance of the golden rule. And you could see in how her students treated each other with kindness, empathy, and respect. Mary Ann has never stopped learning. She continues with her own professional development through the years. Beyond the classroom, Mary Ann's passions have shone just as brightly. She loves traveling, especially anything involving cruise ships and warm weather. But perhaps what stands out most is her deep involvement with Special Olympics. She has been a dedicated supporter of our young athletes program and coordinating opportunities for our third graders to partner with preschool pals. Building bonds and creating friendships and acting as role models in games and beyond. This program has her heart and impact, this program has her heart and its impact is immeasurable. Mary Ann, we wish you well. You have really impacted many, many students, and we will miss you. And we are jealous that you will be cruising along with your husband to many fun places without us. So congratulations, Mary Ann. So Beth graduated from college with a special ed degree and was certified to teach students with severe and profound disabilities. However, she decided a little more important path. We're heading straight into, instead of heading straight into the classroom, she spent a lot of time raising her own children. And then on her journey as a parent volunteer and spending much time supporting our schools as a volunteer, she eventually became a teacher assistant in 2008. And she moved into, sorry, 2007. In 2008, she was in our preschool program. And we should have known right from the very start that we found someone very dedicated and special. She, from 2009 to 2018, worked one-on-one with one single student, a relationship built from the deepest respect, care, and compassion. See? Together, they journeyed from elementary all the way into the high school. In 2019, Beth returned back to our preschool, which we were very happy to have her back. And she has been beloved and a steady force in developing our little young minds. So Beth has a bit of a reputation of being quite a, let's see, a giver. She's constantly bringing in things to the classroom, where I'm constantly eyeing her and saying, whatever you bring in, you need to bring out. Because she is walking in with bags full of things on a very regular basis. But the kids love her for it. It's notable that she has spent countless hours with many of our students who love, love, love and cherish her. And I'm sure she'll be spending time in her retirement, visiting her many grandchildren, traveling to Colorado and some other fun places with her husband, and spending lots more time with her family. So we wish Beth well, and we appreciate everything you've done and what you've brought to our children.
Great. Next, I'd like to invite up Emily to speak about our retirees from the middle school.
Thank you. So combined, the four retirees from the middle school have 141 years of service. I'll briefly speak about three who couldn't attend tonight. Sheila McPartlin has 35 years, Martha LaBelle with 38 years of service, and Liz McCanna. But tonight, I especially want to talk about Chris McDonough. Come on, cope. All right. So Chris McDonough
Everyone, please rise and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everyone. All right. We're going to start this night off fantastically with a showcase to recognize all of our 2025 retirees. Peter, would you like to take it away from here?
I sure would. Thank you. So it is with so many mixed emotions that we celebrate our retirees tonight. We're celebrating them in this wonderful stage and their journey, and we're going to miss them. You know, we have such a collective level of incredible expertise, care for students, care for one another, critical members of our community who are here tonight. And, you know, it really is our honor to celebrate them, to recognize their incredible contributions to the lives of so many children throughout their careers here and there against it. And each and every one of them had incredible influence on the lives of literally thousands of students. And so when we think about our life's journey, we think about people who matter, people who do things that matter, people who really make an impact in the world. The people we're celebrating tonight really have done so. And so what we're going to do tonight is have each one of our principals and directors who have someone who's here tonight who's retiring say a few words about them. And so we want to recognize each and every one of them and all they have brought to our community. So tonight, why don't we start with our elementary school? And we'll have Lisa come up and recognize our people who are retiring from our elementary school.
I'd like to start with Mary Ann Cook. So we're here to -- I don't want to cry because I always cry at these things. Wish Mary Ann very well in her retirement. I have a little synopsis of her career. She started after graduating at Rhode Island College in 1985 with a special ed degree. From the very beginning, her heart, it was clearly in the right place with children who needed someone to believe in them, support them, and help them shine. She began her career with deep education, working with early intervention and with Easter seals, supporting students with severe and profound disabilities. She also worked the Special Education's preschool program. Along the way, she brought her skills and other roles. Apparently, she was a secretary and a data entry person at one point. That was news to me when I looked at her file. She joined Narragansett Elementary School in 1998. And for over two decades, she's worn many, many hats, from special educator to classroom teacher, most notably in grade three, where she spent the majority of her teaching years. If you've ever walked into her classroom, she's always emphasized the importance of the golden rule, and you could see in how her students treated each other with kindness, empathy, and respect. Mary Ann has never stopped learning. She continues with her own professional development through the years. Beyond the classroom, Mary Ann's passions have shone just as brightly. She loves traveling, especially anything involving cruise ships and warm weather. But perhaps what stands out most is her deep involvement with Special Olympics. She has been a dedicated supporter of our young athletes program and coordinating opportunities for our third graders to partner with preschool pals. Building bonds and creating friendships and acting as role models in games and beyond, this program has her heart and impact -- this program has her heart and its impact is immeasurable. Mary Ann, we wish you well. You have really impacted many, many students, and we will miss you. And we are jealous that you will be cruising along with your husband to many fun places without us. So congratulations, Mary Ann. So Beth graduated from college with a special ed degree and was certified to teach students with severe and profound disabilities. However, she decided a little more important path. We're heading straight into -- instead of heading straight into the classroom, she spent a lot of time raising her own children. And then on her journey as a parent volunteer and spending much time supporting our schools as a volunteer, she eventually became a teacher assistant in 2008. And she moved into our -- sorry, 2007. In 2008, she was in our preschool program, and we should have known right from the very start that we found someone very dedicated and special. She, from 2009 to 2018, worked one-on-one with one single student, a relationship built from the deepest respect, care, and compassion. Together, they journeyed from elementary all the way into the high school. In 2019, Beth returned back to our preschool, which we were very happy to have her back. And she has been beloved and a steady force in developing our little young minds. So Beth has a bit of a reputation of being quite a, let's see, a giver. She's constantly bringing in things to the classroom, where I'm constantly eyeing her and saying, whatever you bring in, you need to bring out, because she is walking in with bags full of things on a very regular basis. But the kids love her for it. It's notable that she has spent countless hours with many of our students who love, 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 and cherish her. And I'm sure she'll be spending time in her retirement, visiting her many grandchildren, traveling to Colorado, and some other fun places with her husband, and spending lots more time with her family. So we wish Beth well, and we appreciate everything you've done and what you've brought to our children.
Great. Next, I'd like to invite up Emily to speak about our retirees from the middle school.
Thank you. So combined, the four retirees from the middle school have 141 years of service. I'll briefly speak about three who couldn't attend tonight. Sheila McPartlin has 35 years, Martha LaBelle with 38 years of service, and Liz McCanna. But tonight, I especially want to talk about Chris McDonough. Come on, cope. So Chris McDonough has 25 years in special education here at the Pierce School, supporting fifth and sixth grade students. But she began her career at the Northern Rhode Island Collaborative in 1988. That's 37 years of service, right, to the students of Rhode Island. A native of Cranston, she and her husband Pat have made it their home where they raised their two boys, Connor and Aiden. Believe it or not, Chris and I had kids around the same time. I had Ethan a couple of weeks before --
One.
One week. So that's one week before Aiden. So we share a very special bond in that way, being mothers at the same time. Christine has been a steady advocate for inclusion, equity, and individualized success. Her expertise, patience, and warm-hearted nature have helped students overcome challenges and discover their strengths. We will miss her style, her Irish flair, and her soda bread at St. Patrick's Day, though she says she's going to bring some back along with zeppelins and other assorted goodies that she's very good at. So congratulations to Chris for a job well done.
Next, I'd like to invite up Melissa Denton, Dr. Denton, to speak about our district and student services employees.
So I have the privilege to talk about Dr. Donna Wallace. I'm going to do -- try to do what Lisa tried not to do, and that's cry, but it'll happen, so we'll just plan on it. Donna received her physical therapy degree in 1986 from UConn and started in Narragansett in 2007. It looks like you started part-time, and you were officially hired in 2010. Actually, one of her letters of recommendation are from some of the related service providers you currently work with now. It is so amazing in Narragansett because you can be at an IEP meeting with Donna, and she's had the student from preschool all the way to transition. She's been working with him since they were three. In 2012, you went back to school and got your doctorate in physical therapy. So I'm going to be honest. I was working on writing what I was going to say tonight about all of the experiences we've had together, and Jill came flying down the hallway, and she said, "Did you see that email we just got from that parent? Because we sent out an email today. Donna wrote a letter to all of her families, letting them know she was retiring and explaining who would be coming." And those parents' words are so beautiful, I'm going to use them if I can get through it. I may have to have somebody take over. Dear Ms. Wallace, we cannot begin -- because I truly believe they wrote for all of us. We cannot begin to express how grateful we are for everything you have done for our child and our entire family. Your dedication, expertise, and genuine care has made such a meaningful difference in his life and educational journey. Your patience, encouragement, and tireless efforts to help our child reach his full potential have not gone unnoticed. You've not only supported his physical development and mobility, but have also given him confidence and independence that will serve him well beyond his school years. As a family, we have been blessed to have someone like you advocating for our child and ensuring he has every opportunity to succeed. Your professionalism, combined with your warm, caring approach, has made even the most challenging moments feel manageable. Thank you for being such an important part of his story and for the positive impact you've had on our family. We will always remember your kindness and dedication." I mean, I have to write this family a thank you because they summarize, Donna, how amazing you are and how much care and dedication you have for each and every one of your students. Thank you for all you have done, and stay in touch, please.
And finally, I'd like to invite up Steve Gormley to speak about our transportation and maintenance employees who are retiring.
Good evening. I don't have any employees here, but I'd like to thank all of them. Jim Longanice is a current bus driver. He drives a Minibus 22, and he has been an exemplary employee. He will be missed. He's going to keep his license, so hopefully we'll get him back for some sub time. And then I have two custodians retiring. Dave Horton with 20 years of service and Cliff Hall with seven years of service, both excellent employees, and I appreciate all they've done for the district. Thank you.
All right. I want to thank everyone. We are going to take a brief pause so everyone can get --
I think we're going to do a couple of pictures.
Yes, pictures.
And then as I know everyone really wants to stay for the full meeting, but we'll fully understand if you, you know, have other things to do.
All right. Thank you.
Reports and the first one in that section is acknowledgement and recognition of service for our very own Marco here.
That's great.
Thanks, Justin. So I have a couple of words to share to everyone with everyone about Marco who we are really, it's a lot of people we're gonna miss tonight. So tonight, we're proud to recognize Marco Campopiano for his outstanding, and I mean outstanding, service as the 2024-2025 student liaison to the school committee. Marco has been a steady and professional voice for his peers, always bringing thoughtful insights to the table. His detailed reports, his research, his student-led surveys has helped guide our conversations and shape real decisions that have a real effect on the lives of our students within our schools. Whether it was weighing in on the district's device policy, helping move the senior project experience forward, or just giving feedback on calendars and schedules, Marco made sure the student perspective was not just heard, but truly considered. His contributions went well beyond policy, from the yearbook committee to wider school involvement, including being a student athlete and balancing that with all of his other commitments, Marco found meaningful ways to stay engaged and to support his classmates at every turn. This fall, Marco will head to the University of Rhode Island to study communications, which is a natural next step for someone who's already shown such talent for representing others and making their voices heard. So Marco, thank you on behalf of the Narragansett School Committee, on behalf of the Narragansett community, on behalf of me personally. Your leadership, your professionalism, and your commitment to our school has been second to none. We're grateful for all you've done, and we wish you all the best and continued success. Congratulations.
So I know some committee members also want to say some words, so if we, you know.
At the end of last school year, I thought to myself, we probably won't have another student representative do as good a job as our first student representative, Maya DiAngelo. However, I'm very happy to say that I was wrong, very, very wrong. Marco's been a wonderful student representative. His oral and written reports have been thorough, informative, and the amount of work that he has done, developing, administering, and compiling survey results to share student and staff opinions on many of the topics that we have on our school committee agendas this year, has been very, very helpful in helping us make these decisions. So now you probably know what I'm thinking about next year. So I want to say thank you and I wish you success, and I think you ought to consider a career in data mining and analysis, because I think it'd be right up your alley. You've done a great job for us, so good luck as you take your next steps.
I would just like to echo what everybody's saying, and also on a personal note, having known you from preschool and kindergarten and watching you grow into this vivacious young man who runs circles around me, myself up here, I'm just so proud of you, and I know you're gonna shine at URI. I'm just genuinely proud of you, the young man you've become, and thank you. It was such a learning experience up here. Thank you so much.
And Marco, just to echo everyone else's comments, I'm also gonna miss your reports. I really felt like I was inside the walls of the school, and I really had an understanding of what's going on. So you've set the bar really high. You're gonna do great things, and I can't wait to see them.
And of course, you know, this train is gonna continue. I want to say, I've just been impressed. You've done what the position was meant to do. You've represented the schools well, you've represented student interest well, and I could tell at every single meeting you took away some lesson learned or some way to improve, and it's been a consistent and hard work effort, and you've done a great job. So thank you so much.
And then I just wanted to say, just a quick, real brief, just a couple of words, just thank you all so much for your support. And I just also want to thank the Class of 2025 Class Council and our amazing class advisors, Ms. Dully and Ms. Foltz, for all they put together for the last few weeks of school, and also congratulate the boys' tennis and lacrosse teams that both recently won state titles. So that's three state titles for Narragansett this year, along with the girls' basketball title, so congrats to them. And just as I look back on my high school career, I am completely filled with gratitude for the incredible opportunities I've had. From rigorous coursework to CTE classes, the Narragansett school system has allowed me to explore my interests and showcase my passion for Narragansett. I've been proud to be a part of various athletics, student groups, and activities, including cross-country, indoor track, outdoor track, VASA, the yearbook committee, principal's council, district mobile technology committee, and most importantly, being a student representative. I've also been grateful to be an instructor and third-degree blackfellow at Babcock's Karate and fifth-year employee at the Bonnet Shores Beach Club, so being actively involved in Narragansett has been truly special for me. It's been amazing, this experience, following Maya, who represented the student voices last year, and I just want to extend a huge thank you to Ms. Ruggiero for all of her support, email reminders, and for including all of my stuff in the school committee meeting packets. So I've appreciated her work with the senior spotlights, even helping me with some of the yearbook as well. I'm also grateful to the members and administrators I've met and worked with, including Town Council President Menzies, Ms. Armstrong, Mr. Provone, Dr. Nobles, Ms. McNeese, Mr. Scanyon, Dr. Cummings, and Ms. Tedino. I've known you since preschool at NES, so like you said, this was a first full circle for all of us. Also like to thank Mr. Fiore, our NHS principal. He's always supported students, he's supported me, and I've just had the pleasure of working with him on a daily basis. I'm sure he saw my name in his inbox and wanted to probably run in the other direction, but he responded thoroughly every time, and I'm just grateful for his leadership, mentorship, and willingness to listen to my ideas. So it was a pleasure to work with you. Finally, thank you to the Narragansett administrators, Ms. Hagan, Mr. Gormley, Mr. Lugini, Ms. Dandaran, Ms. Haig, Dr. Denton, Ms. Chardier, Mr. Candice, Ms. Wilson, Mr. McCloskey, and Ms. Viafor, who have all supported and listened to my perspectives and updates during our school committee meetings. Thank you to ensure our district is well-funded, managed, and informed. My role was to engage with various student groups and report updates and pertinent issues to the school committee. I've enjoyed covering a range of topics and issues, from the number of athletic home games, indoor track facilities, field trip postponements, gaining feedback from students and staff on cell phone policy, the new senior project experience, and even attending the budget workshops to gain feedback. I've learned a lot of feedback from the Narragansett students and faculty and appreciated hearing the voices and perspectives shared with me. Lastly, I would like to thank my family, who's been there for me since the first day of preschool to graduation, and I really wouldn't be up here today without you. So thank you for letting me grow up in Narragansett. It's just, it's truly been the best place. Thank you.
Well, Marco, I think at this point you know what the next step is. We're gonna pause and get some pictures taken. So. Oh, yeah. Can't forget this. Yeah. I think we're probably good, Justin.
Okay, I think so.
All right. Calling the meeting back to order. We're gonna move on to school committee reports. Does any member have any particular reports they'd like to give? Diane?
On June 3rd, Principal Fiore, Assistant Principal McCloskey, and I interviewed the seven candidates that have applied to be our student representative for next year. And Tammy and I, as the policy subcommittee, reviewed the device policy, the attendance policy, and the conflict and conduct policy.
Thank you, Diane. All right, thank you. Peter Cummings, it's up to you right now.
Oh, well, thank you. So I just have a couple of things to announce and to celebrate. I think the, along with, you know, an amazing graduation that we just had, so thanks to our high school staff for really putting that together. I want to publicly reinforce and acknowledge Elizabeth Jenison as our valedictorian and Avery Schaaf as our salutatorian. Congratulations to them. Both of them gave amazing speeches at graduation, as did Mrs. Foltz, our graduation speaker, who is also a graduate of Narragansett High School, which was really great to see. But I also want to announce, in case people miss this, that our very own Sarah Dully, high school teacher, who was our current Teacher of the Years in Narragansett, has been named the State of Rhode Island Teacher of the Year, which is an incredible honor. So amongst all of the districts across the whole state, Sarah put in her application, and she was selected by RYE to now represent the state of Rhode Island as the Teacher of the Year from Rhode Island at the national level. So we are incredibly proud of her. The Commissioner of Education came and recognized Sarah at one of our graduation rehearsals last week, I think it was. And so there will be a formal kind of media blitz and statewide announcement early in the fall, but I thought we could share that within our own community. And Sarah is just an incredible teacher, and we love everything that she does. So it's an incredible honor for Narragansett. This is actually the second state Teacher of the Year that we've had while I've been here, and so Kristen Hayes Lee won it, I believe, in 2017. And so there's not a lot of districts that have had two state Teachers of the Year in such a short time span. Sarah does a great job representing our faculty and the great work that they do, so they do. So congratulations to Sarah.
Excellent. Thank you, Peter. All right. Now we're moving on to the consent agenda. I have a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to improve the consent agenda items, CA 1A, CA 2A, CA 2B, and CA 2C.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Bring to a vote, right? Yep. Vote, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Vote passes four zero. All right, and now we're on to the budget report.
Good evening. Expenses for the 11 months ended May 31st, 2025, total $28,366,151, and that's 76.91% of our budget. The expenditures and encumbrances total $33,65,285, and that's 89.65% of the budget.
Thank you. All right, we're on to school committee business. The first item of our agenda is approval of the revised and final FY 2026 school budget. There's a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the Director of Finance and Administration to approve the revised and final FY 2026 school budget in the amount of $37,097,923.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Great. So the reason that we have the budget back on the agenda is that when the town finalized their budget, there were some adjustments to the town allocation to the school department. We've also had some late adjustments to the state aid that is going to the school department. So the town reduced our requests slightly, but it's within the parameters of what we can handle as the budget process moves forward. And the state increased our aid very slightly. And so we were able to, because we got an OPEB report, so, you know, our obligations to our retirees, we have consistently made our full expected payment into OPEB, and so that payment was, we could put a little bit less into OPEB slightly to account for the reduction from the town in order to make the budget funding work appropriately. And then two, we've got, I believe, about $16,000 in addition from the state, more than we expected, so we had to make that adjustment as well.
Thank you, Peter. Discuss? Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes four zero. All right, moving on to the second agenda item, approval of resurfacing of the play area at the Narragansett Elementary School. We have a motion in front of us to accept the recommendation of the school superintendent and the Director of Finance Administration to accept both proposals from Vigargo Materials LLC and Snap Sports Athletic Surfaces to complete the resurfacing of the play area at the Narragansett Elementary School for a total of $61,768.29.
So moved. Second.
All right. Steve?
Good evening. This is to make the hot surface play area behind the elementary school a little safer, a little outside-of-the-box thinking with the materials. We're gonna use an impact surface similar to this over asphalt, so we're gonna replace the asphalt that's there with a new subbase and level that out so that it drains correctly. And then this matting will go on top of that, and again, it's an outside-of-the-box thinking for the play surface. It will help with impact into, if you know you fall on asphalt, you get stuff in your knees. This is hopefully gonna prevent a lot of the injuries that we have on the playground. The decision to go with this product was in conjunction with the elementary school principal and dean. They did the research as well. It was almost a year to try and find an acceptable product for that playground, so.
Thank you, Steve. Quick question, is this a common product used in other playgrounds, or would you say we're on the cutting edge?
It's starting to be. There's only a few in New England. The closest one is in West Hartford, and they rave about it, they love it, they put it in this year, and they're very impressed with it, and I've talked to Midwest people that have used it and are happy with it as well.
Fantastic.
I just have a quick question. I understand this to be the basketball, but is there a specific reason for the squares?
That's a four-square, that's a game that the elementary school plays and requested, so we built it into the system.
And that's their serious four-square competition. Like, you don't wanna mess with that.
So, so once it's put together, if you decide you wanted a different configuration, it's not put together permanently, right? You could take it all?
It snaps together, as the name says, but it'd be quite difficult to get the right layout with that.
So once it snapped together, you couldn't re-
Yeah, you can take it apart, but again, it would be to get the right layout with-
Oh, you mean underneath and-
With what we've done, yeah.
Yeah, it's not intended to be a surface that we would change, you know, depending on need. It's, once it's in, it's pretty much in. And so we are trying to be pretty responsive to what the students currently like to play. We've got a lot of feedback from Lisa and Tracy and from our recess supervisors, so that we are making as much loosely organized free play as we can.
If you're ever there during recess and you hear the calls coming in, you'd understand they need a different surface.
You need to skid knees and things.
Understand why they did research on this.
All right. Any more discussion?
Are they gonna do any other games also?
No.
No, okay.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right. Next on the agenda is approval of the second reading of the device policy. The motion is to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the second read of the district's device policy.
So moved.
I'll second that.
So Connor's here to answer any specific questions you have, but process-wise, if you recall, we had a first draft of the policy at our last meeting. The committee had feedback based on the policy, the way it was drafted, so we reconvened, did a redraft of the policy, thanks to Connor for really taking extensive notes on our last discussion, really took that, looked at the policy, and that is the version that you have in place now. Some of the requests of the committee were for it to be, make sure that it was consistent, that it was simple, that it was clear, and that it was in line with the proposed legislation at the state level. So I would recommend to you that this does fit all of those parameters that the committee outlined at our last meeting, and I know Connor's here to answer any specific questions you may have.
Well, I do have one, kinda, I guess it's less of a question, more of a discussion. Obviously, this is also coming with the state has, going to pass or has not passed yet, a new law about students and their cell phone and devices. Could you explain, like, the connection, just maybe for mostly the people at home, like, between that and our policy? If you feel comfortable, yeah.
Yeah, sure. So a lot of the language, particularly in the authorized use for personal devices section, comes directly from that. A lot of that has to do with students who would have access to cell phones for 504s and IDPs for, like, glucose monitoring and that kind of thing. Other than that, the proposed legislation at the state level talks about a physical prohibition on cell phones for all students during the school day, so we just made the policy reflect that.
And so, just to be clear, right, it is consistent pre-K-12, right? So students may not use their phones during the school day, right? Phones need to be off and away, and are to be away from the start of our instructional time to the end of the school day.
Perfect. Any other discussion?
I just want to say that I thought it was a much cleaner, clearer policy, more concise, and as Peter said, it's applicable across the district, so I very much was very happy to read the revised thing. And I read a quote that I thought I might share that kind of coincided with us as a district developing the new personal device policy. It's from a gentleman named John Goyette, who was the vice president at Thomas Aquinas College in New York State, and he said, "It's time to take a step back from technology and return to the pedagogical tools that have served educators for centuries. Start by eliminating online classes and banning screens in the classroom." So just wanted to share that.
I'd like to thank you also for all that work, and I know Marco did a lot of work to try to come up with a program that worked for, like, you guys at the high school, and I know that coming through the state legislative kind of changed all that, but I appreciate all your diligent work with that. I know the wording changed and everything changed due to that, but-
Yeah, thank you.
We do appreciate you taking everybody's thoughts and considerations into matters.
Yeah, you know, the nature of it, things change, but really, a lot of appreciation and thanks goes to Marco, and we've discussed it multiple times, so he was very helpful.
All right. Hearing no more discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes four zero. Thank you. All right, on to our fourth agenda item, the approval of the second read of the conflicts of interest and code of conduct policy. We have a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the second read of the district's conflict of interest and code of conduct policy.
So moved.
I'll second that.
So as a reminder to the committee, you all did not have any suggested changes to this policy at our last meeting, so as a reminder, these, it's just a reinforcement of our current practices as it is, that essentially people should not be receiving gifts, should not be receiving favors, should not be receiving any sort of financial or otherwise incentive to pick one company over another or engage in business in a way that is not ethical. This is particularly, it is in our handbooks, it is in other sections of our policies, but the school lunch program, the federal school lunch program, wanted a standalone policy, and so we're just condensing that into the policy in front of you.
Perfect. Thank you, Peter. Discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes four zero. All right, we are on to the fifth agenda item, which is just a discussion, so there'll be no motion, and it's a discussion for the first read of our attendance policy.
So Emily's gonna come up and is available to answer any specific questions you may have. She was part of the committee that helped develop the policy. Essentially, what this policy, to give you some background, is to update our attendance policies to reflect changes in state law as well as changes in practice. And so overall, when you look at the policy, it does reflect our current practices, and so this will not kind of change major things that we are doing, but it will allow our attendance teams that we have at each school to have the backing of a school committee policy to make sure that they are, A, kind of developing their practices in a way that reflects best practice and the will of the community, and B, for them to be able to go back to that policy if someone is questioning, right, why we are so concerned about attendance. Here's what we know, attendance is a very major factor in student success. You know, there's lots of data that shows that students learn at a much higher rate when they're actually in school, not surprising, right? But, you know, RYE has released some really interesting data that there's a significant gap in graduation rate and post-graduation success between students who consistently attend and students who are chronically absent. Remember that chronically absent means that you miss more than 10% of the days at any given time. While our chronic absenteeism rate continues to decline, it's still, you know, north of 10% of our students, and so, you know, that concerns us. While we, in comparison to other districts in the state, are, you know, in the lower middle of the pack, we have concerns about many of our students who are not coming to school in the ways that we know in the long term are good for them. We have great attendance teams that every- We have concerns about many of our students who are not coming to school in the ways that we know in the long term are good for them. We have great attendance teams at every building. We do reviews as at the district level throughout the year. We do have a data team that looks at all sorts of different indicators, attendance being one of them, and we monitor it very closely. I want to particularly acknowledge Rebecca Angel, our school social worker, who does tremendous work in this area and does a lot of follow-up with families. So with that, Emily, if you will, take any questions that you might have.
Discussion?
So under the attendance improvement plan, and there are four different ones, the whole school, individualized, early intervention, intensive support. Is this is this new from what we have been doing, or is this just kind of codifying what what we have been doing?
So we work as an attendance team with our social worker, Rebecca Angel, very closely and try to develop individualized plans for families. We recognize that every family has different needs and different things going on. And, you know, oftentimes, we have to meet them where they are. Our role is to have them here in in school. And we want to work with the family to make sure that we can get the student there. So it is kind of a reflection of things that we're already in practice. And we're just making it, including it in the policy so that we can have it there and build on it if necessary.
So it's formalizing what we do.
You know, I think this is important because, as you mentioned a little bit, Peter, they, since COVID, we've the whole state has seen a big bump up in chronic absenteeism. So I think this is a good first read. I don't have many major questions or changes. Anyone else want to?
Did you find you have major changes in here?
So, you know, as we worked as a team, we realized that the needs of the elementary school versus the middle and high school are different. So we're trying to leave some room in the policy so that each building can kind of develop a plan that's going to work best for them. And you could see that when we put our handbook together, there may be more specific language around the plans and actions that each school is going to put in place.
So I know this has been like a statewide initiative with the commissioner giving a lot of attention. Is there any help coming down from RIDE or different approaches or new approaches?
So Rebecca Angel is kind of our our ear to the ground, if you will. She works very closely with the magistrates that come for our truancy court. So they've been able to provide some information to her prior to this initiative that's been coming up from the commissioner. So we've actually been discussing this as a district for the last couple of school years. And we're just moving it into policy with trying to get in the head of the legislation that's in the Senate right now.
So just to give an overview of the way the process works, right? So currently, if we have a student who has exceeded 10% in their absences, we do work with them with our school-based staff, so guidance counselors, mental health staff, school social worker. And we do reach outs and interventions with the families and try to get attendance plan in place. We also do lots of school-wide attendance matters. And so the state, to answer your question, has been helpful in terms of providing data and resources that helps us in awareness raising around the importance of being at school. And so we do appreciate that kind of push on the state level. What we then do is that we work with families individually. You know, most of the time, families are really working with us in partnership. And, you know, they want their children to be in school and things are getting in the way. You know, it may be a mental health issue, it may be a social issue, it may be other things that are going on. So we work together to solve that. If we do get to a place where our typical kind of school-based methods are not working, you know, the state of Rhode Island has a program where we can have a magistrate come and meet with students and do a mini court within the school. So they use our conference room, they come to us, the family comes in, the student comes in, and we work with the family to have kind of those resources beyond the school-level resources put in place in order to support the family so they can attend school regularly. So when Emily refers to the magistrate coming, that's the program that she's referring to.
Thank you. Well, no, we work very closely with the the family courts when we have to get that level. That is obviously something that we don't want to get to. And we put in place many different strategies and plans to assist the family, to get the students into the school building. But sometimes we do have to go to that. Sometimes it also opens doors to other agencies that are available to us through the the court system.
So again, what this is only our first read, right? And so again, if you have questions about it, reach out, you know, to me, you know, if you have any suggested changes that are beyond what we're discussing today. You know, sometimes as you as you read it, you may have other changes. Let me know and we can reconvene the the policy committee.
Thank you, Peter.
Thanks, Emily.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All right, all there's no voting item on this because this is the first read. So we'll be moving on to our sixth agenda item, discussion approval of an extended school day. The motion is to accept the recommendation of school of the superintendent to approve an increase of 15 minutes to the school day beginning in the fall of 2025.
So moved.
I'll second that.
All right.
So as we discussed in our last meeting, in the most recent teacher's contract, there is the opportunity to extend the school school day by 15 minutes. The opportunity, along with greater learning time and kind of all those different things that, you know, we have discussed along the way over the last year and longer, to be honest, is RIDE has started, they had a policy change within their calendar regulations. And we have the opportunity with the longer school day to not have to make up snow days because RIDE measures the amount of time that students should have in school in minutes, not days. And so with that, we would have a waiver for up to four, a waiving of up to four emergency closure days, whether that be snow, storm, power, whatever that might be. So at our last meeting, you all requested that we do a survey, which you do have and is in our school committee packet. And so, you know, in that survey, almost 60% of parents either support or strongly support. Close to 75% of parents either support, sorely support, or 75% of the community support, sorely support, or neutral about adding the 15 minutes to the day. Also, within that survey, we asked, would you prefer to, if we did add it, before school, after school, or split the difference? So 39.4% chose at the beginning of the day, 38.4% chose end of the day, and 22% chose split the difference. And then in that, about 75% of people said they would have, it would have no significant impact or only a minor adjustment impact on their on their family. And so so that's kind of the quick summary of the of it. And there was lots of comments of people giving their individual thoughts and contributions in your decision-making process. So with that, I think there are two choices in front of the committee now. One is, do you want to add 15 minutes to the school day, as is the opportunity in the teacher contract? And then two, if you do choose to add it, do you want to add it to the beginning of the school day, to the end of the school day? Or would you like to split the difference?
Well, so, you know, there's a couple of thoughts I have with, at first, I I do think I want to add this. This is kind of a, we have one of the shorter, shorter school days in general around. So and especially, I think there's a lot of benefit to having the extra time. We recently, when I said recently, it was a few years ago, pushed the time back in the morning and turned it to two school bus schedules to give more kids more time in the morning. There's there's a lot of studies that have been showing that that's beneficial. And at the same time, we also have a concern that in the evening, if we go too late, we can start, especially in the winter months, having kids get off the bus, particularly younger kids, in the like dark. So I'm more interested in a split, so that way we don't have either of those being eaten to too much.
Okay, great. I I will say, I do have concern. Were you to add it only at the end of the school day, particularly for our elementary school students, that would move their dismissal to 3:45. That would mean that we would have some students, you know, getting home in the 4:30, 4:45 range. It does get dark pretty early, you know, in the, you know, late November, December, January times there. So I do have some concerns there. Steve and I have discussed that. But again, we can make adjustments based on the will of the committee. And 100% Justin agree, we worked really hard on kind of adjusting that school start time. There is compelling research around students, you know, getting more sleep. And so, you know, again, it's it's weighing those two things, right? You know, the benefits of a slightly longer school day and the start time and finding a way to balance those two pieces.
And, you know, that that's dominated the conversation. But in looking at the polling, it seemed to, there wasn't really, a lot of people were happy with either the morning or the afternoon. People had preferences, and there was a good chunk of 20% that want was happy with splitting it. Ultimately, this is 15 minutes, so we can be a little flexible.
Should, were you to suggest splitting it, my suggestion to you would be to move the start times 10 minutes earlier in the morning to have a nice round number, right? And so start at 7:50 at the element, I'm sorry, 7:50 at the high school and middle school and 8:50 at the elementary school. And then go to 2:35 at the high school and middle school and 3:35 at the elementary school.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think of the morning side or splitting it like that would be smarter move than later because then you get into the dark time.
Right. I think you'll also have, you know, again, if you chose to put the full 15 minutes in the morning, again, there there is support for that as well.
Yeah, I mean, good, you know, this, I'm also thankful for everyone to fill this out. We did read all the comments. And it seemed to be a lot of excitement for what these minutes could be used for and how the potential is there. So it it seems to be overwhelmingly do something, which is good.
Yeah, so the consensus, I think, from the polling bit was pretty evenly split, you know, 38 versus 39%. You know, whether we start early or start later. But the comments were overwhelmingly in favor of starting earlier.
Yeah.
So I think that shows that the the folks that are on the the starting earlier camp feel stronger about that. There was also a lot of comments about what we're going to do with those extra 15 minutes. So I think we should at least say a few words about that.
Absolutely, right? And so one of the things that we've really thought a lot about is, you know, how to use that time. I know at the middle school and at the elementary school, they're really looking to see how we get a little bit more movement in, right? And do those pieces. And I know they're thinking about that at the high school. So they can't really create their schedules until we know whether it's approved, right? But, you know, the, I have shared the survey in the comments with the with the administrative staff. So everyone's aware of kind of what the community is thinking about.
Yeah. Another another thing, too, and this is in the start earlier camp. There was a lot of comments about after-school activities, both provided by, you know, both that are part of the school and also outside of the school, things like Little League. And if we push back the school day, it also pushes back the everyone else's social, social calendar.
And I have received strong feedback from our faculty that they would certainly prefer the start earlier option.
One other, you know, I read all the comments, highlighted some other, some other ones. So for the elementary students, the parents of elementary students, they're looking to start a little bit earlier. Makes it easier to find childcare commute times, so. But on the counter of that, our high school students, you know, especially some that that join us from from Jamestown, say it's a bit of a struggle sometimes to to get over here, which I do appreciate that.
So I do like that suggestion of maybe starting 10 and adding the five somewhere towards the end or somewhere. At least 10 doesn't feel as bad at the beginning as, I don't know, just mentally to me. 10 is doable in the morning.
Yeah, no, I can I can see that. It's kind of the best of both worlds. It keeps the two big concerns we have like addressed. All right. Any more discussion?
Does the, does administration have a feel that they would rather 15 in the morning or 10 or?
No, I think we've discussed it as an administrative team. And it really, again, I think our concern is student safety, right? And so the real, the concern with student safety with the elementary students with 15 minutes later is, you know, certainly there for us. I echo what Dave just said about the after after school. We already have one of the later end times for our high school and middle school sports. And so it can often be challenging for an away game, for example, to make sure that our students are getting there in a timely way. And so that can be, you know, the more we extend the end of the day, it just gets a little bit more challenging in that way.
You don't realize how big Rhode Island is until you have to play soccer on the other side of the. I I do like that idea of of splitting the difference, but more favoring the the earlier start time.
All right. With that case, do we have to modify the motion? Or is this just, are, is the motion enough and we allow it's to allow the use of those minutes as needed?
So you can do the motion to be the increase of 15 minutes, right? And so part of what you're giving me is guidance because you really approved the the exact minutes of the school day, when you approved the the handbooks and the schedules and all that type of thing in in August. But we need your guidance in terms of what you're thinking about as we develop those programs and and those schedules because this is a change.
Sounds good. Yeah, that makes sense. We're not specifically telling you, hey, spend five minutes here or a minute here, you know. We're we're telling you, like, take the opportunity we've been given to expand the day.
Correct.
All right. So no modification needed? Do you want to just, how do we feel about ending discussion?
So just to be sure, I am understanding and being clear with the community, right? So so what the school committee is asking us to do is to adjust the school start time by 10 minutes earlier and to extend the school day at the end of the day by five minutes.
That's correct. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four zero. Thank you, Peter. All right. On to our next item, which is communications. Does anyone have any communications they want to share that they have received? Hearing none? All right, our future meetings, our next meeting is July 16th. It'll be a workshop, actually, at 6:00 PM. Peter, is that workshop going to be here or is it going to be upstairs?
It's typically upstairs in the school system offices.
All right. So it'll be upstairs in the school system offices. Hopefully, you see everyone there. Thank you so much. Have a good Fourth of July because we'll not be reconvening until then. Motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:10.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?